Bye bye, enjoy.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
If there's anyone that would like to speak to the board tonight, please use the sign up form in front to sign your name. Now we're going to ask the vice chair to do the roll call.
Albert?
Here.
Chillian? I know she's here. Cooper?
Here.
Rockenthal? I know he's here. Black is here. Rich Hawley? Addison. Janelle Lee Addison. Catherine? Yeah, just here. Steichen? Addison. Taversev? And Tranzola?
Here. Sam is up at the high school. We have board recognition.
So we have one, two, and three. Three asked.
It's a beautiful day.
Say, Asher, do everybody know where Sam is?
Yes.
Yes.
And Richard's there.
Richard's probably in the house.
I know, you believe that?
Since we have no one that want to come forward to board tonight to do any type of presentation, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. I hope everyone on board get an extensive package to read all the information that was in the package. BSO asked that we have motion for consent calendar. And I'm going to ask everyone, please, please speak into your microphone so the board secretary can hear what you are saying. Thank you. Yes.
That the Board of Education approved the items on the consent calendar as recommended 12-102 through 12-109.
Second. I move. Board of members. It was probably the second move by Kathy with the second. Mrs. Albert, we're going to be very clear from now on, Mrs. Albert's second. Are there any questions on the consent calendar? No? All those who are there, could I hear your ayes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any understanding? Motion so. Do we have a board you're representing here tonight? No? Student representative?
Hi, how are you? Hello, good, thank you, how are you?
So bad.
First of all, I just like to hand these dates. Hand these dates. Graduation invitations out. I just want to pass them around, they're put out about 15, so it should be out. Okay. So, vacations right now in the process of meeting once a week after school as some committees to examine successful practices, to get the best results from the students at A's. They will be, sorry, some of these students will work on an amazing amount of challenges to be the successful graduates, if you're still proud of their accomplishments. The graduate students will graduate 9:30 AM on the 19th at A's. And if it rains, same time, but at West High, 9:30 AM. Many are headed off to some first, second year educations at Moore, at Moore Law Community College, now we're talking, or Chester, just made a few. Some of them headed directly into the work world, so that's exciting. Also, we're also in the process of the early new students, teachers and engineering students have been busy interviewing students over the last two Saturdays, June 2nd, and the night, as well as after school and before school. Interviews will continue until the end of next week and continue a week before school opens in the fall.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Dr. Sam, the presentation now, student there?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. The ed specs, as you know, we've been talking for a few years regarding the expansion of Mill Ridge Intermediate, the possibility of a third middle school, and we think that will come to fruition here. In addition, there are three schools scheduled to expand 16 classrooms that we have, that we're proposing. The way this will work, the board has developed the education specs, we've had it at the facilities committee, and now we're coming on the board to look at and approve those specifications. That then will go to the city and they will submit an application to meet those educational specifications for us, freely and for our kids. So, I have a revised one however, because this is something we've been working with the architect. We spent a lot of time, not so much with the elementary, because that's pretty perfunctory in terms of the, what they had to really do is do soil bearings and be sure that they were able to put the buildings in there. The real work came into the NRI, its expansion. There were 28 classrooms there. We were looking at that as the city was looking at the expansion, maybe 400, 400 different students. They know as well as you know that we needed a school of about at least 600 in order to make a difference in doing those schools that are just about 1120 at Rogers Park, 1150 next year, and about 1105, we're pretty close to the same thing at Moore. So, in order to do that, we needed the 600. So, the school has been expanded. In that expansion, there had to be some conversations about what it would look like, particularly moving in the direction of the STEM Academy that has been the plan, to move the STEM Academy from the current Rogers Park setting where they brought new youngsters and Rogers Park, over to the new setting. And then creating another center there, another 300 of an academy. Although we haven't gone through it, the idea is it'd be kind of an outflow to what we have at our current West Lincoln and I get school, magnet school. And we would have, we're calling it a kind of like an international back toward a program, international studies. So, what I have here is that we revisited specs as of today, we had to make some modifications. We had the principal, Pat Chokey, and her group do this. There were some modifications and I'll have Ed, Ed his work. Ed done a lot of work in the facilities area, so he's a real help to the city and to me in terms of putting this together. So, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sir? Okay. The elementary specs that you received in the mail, we only made one change. That change was on the front page, we just, on the kitchen area, speaking with the architect, we thought we would put in, just in case we needed it, something about the equipment. And the architect, met with the architect and he said we couldn't leave that out, so that was the only change we made on the elementaries. It was taking out the kitchen equipment, everything else. We added a number of things about the HVA system, the technology. We added things in which are in your specs about the furniture equipment, what is the standard classroom, whiteboards, adequate storage, and so forth. So, we added those in, what is in your spec. The only change we made is take out the kitchen equipment, everything else is in there, we want to make sure the fire alarm was ADA compliant, we wanted to make sure about the destructibility. So, everything else is in there that you received except that one statement on the kitchen equipment. On Mill Ridge, it wasn't a problem, we had too many specs going around, so we had to find out which was the right one, that we kept on changing. But the only change that we made, there were really only one change, two changes. One, on the public address system, we eliminated, on the old spec where it says classroom monitors, we put a period, eliminated everything else after that, and then added the statements that are there, which states... Which is, teach will need a phone in each classroom for use, and we kept that and communicated with the main office as well as phones, that are capable of making local calls in order to contact parents directly, see telephone below, and we added all that other stuff with the telephone below. That was the change we made there. And the only other, we were thinking about the fire alarm, we left it in, about the ADA compliance. Antonio said, you know, even though it has to be ADA compliant automatically, we left that in. And the only other change, it was not a change, we had a discussion about the locker room, I would call it the, on the second page where it says locker, changing rooms, Antonio didn't understand what it was, we explained it to him, so that's in. So, very, very minor changes from what you receive. Before that, we added a number of things, again, with the furniture, fixtures, and the technology. So, those were the only minor changes that we made after speaking with the architect and Antonio this morning. So, you have the up to date minor changes. Next, we're meeting with Antonio and the architect on Monday morning to make sure that the city is ready to fill out all the forms, they have to fill out a grant application checklist, they have to fill out the EDO 49, there's a couple of questions they had, Dr. Sal answered those questions. We have to make sure they have the cost estimate sheets. There are two cost estimates, estimating sheets that they have to hand in to the state, what A and what B. I received all the data to them going through that, the educational specs. The board has to approve those specifications at the next meeting, and city council already did their resolution, when I was there last Monday, on the building project, so we have to get those minutes together. Once we have everything, we'll probably drive it up on the 28th, it's due before June 30th, so we'll do that. So, we want to make sure on Monday that all our ducks in order, that they have all the forms and everything ready for signage by Dr. Sal, who has to sign the EDO 49.
Are there any questions to add? Yes.
The cafeteria addition for Stadler Row. When you say cafeteria, are you also including kitchen?
No, not the kitchen equipment, no.
I don't mean the equipment, I mean the actual kitchen space.
Not at this time, no. Remember, if something comes up after we've been all that, we're allowed to submit an EDO 49R, which is a repurposed, revises our first application. Plus, in the specs that we're sending up to the state, there are alternates in that, as it states in here, so we get all the...
But I just want to make sure that everyone understands that once Stadler Row was built, it was built with just a heating kitchen. It was not built for cooking on site.
Correct.
And today, with all of the new rules and regulations for healthy eating, there's none, no heating going on, there's cooking. So, this is a large school, there's no room to cook and actually give the kids what they need.
And we're still looking at that, we have that meeting on Monday, we mentioned that today.
Well, just so it's in the record that, you know, this, this school is locally, doesn't have adequate space at all.
What would help the eating, just salad, you can make it up.
There you go.
We need you to, because she can't hear. Need you to talk into the mic.
The three buildings that are, that we have is proposal for more expansion, but is that three original, not, I'm not including on Mill Ridge?
There's one more that they were looking at.
And, okay, so that's no longer...
Right.
Is that Mill Ridge in place with that one?
They looked at, there were four buildings that they looked at.
Great Plains?
Great Plains. And I think, actually Bill was at the meeting, my understanding, the bottom line was that the configuration motive to make it happen required, encroached into an area, and that area happens to be within this. So, they decided this is not a place for us to do the addition, right?
They had two options that they looked at, the first was to stay within the footprint of the boundary lines, but instead of a room like this, you have a room that might have a very narrow area bulging out, and another room bulging like this way coming in, they shoehorned in. So, when they looked to go beyond the boundary lines, acquire property, that's what went in, these came in, which is too difficult, so they recommended going to Stadler Row, which has much more property and is very buildable.
But there wasn't one. One of the things, I think, today, for example, we talked about the cafeterias, we had Barry online and talked about that. He said, as I recall the conversation today, that, you know, particularly because of the middle school setting, which is different than elementary, and that's what it was built for, that they'd have to do, you know, the lining and so forth, and servings would have to be different than that. Now, it's a smaller place, there's 600, still 600 kids. So, he was on the line, but he felt very comfortable, correct, that they would work it out. But anyway, that's been so noted, and we left it in in a continued conversations about it, there wasn't issue there before. The exciting part here is that, you know, the whole CRC, that one structure that sits there, who's a parent superintendent at the same time, that's going to be created into these engineering labs, which is going to be a wonderful option for our kids to go to, so that whole side of the equation is going to be great. What we did remove, originally they had some kind of an auditorium that made any sense to us. We were more concerned about fitting the seats of our kids, and the auditorium is not, you know, the end all and deal that we needed. So, this will work very nicely for us. My concern is, we're going to have to move those people out of CRC, and there's no client at this point. There was some looking at some space that, that one of those, I'm concerned about that, albeit, you know, we need to move forward with this, but that's something that's on our agenda. It's going to be free years down the line, we know that. That is something we have to be mindful and not forget. We have, about how many people that we have to move?
12, 14.
Yeah, so it's, you know, it's not, and the original thing I said is, we've taken here before, there's a romance of how to figure out what we're going to do with that. Because aside from that, these specs mean requirements for the STEM.
I actually have a question for Kathy, I cover the expertise in different areas, and I don't know enough about this, and I'd like to, perhaps others on the board. Are all of our cafeterias in our schools set up to cook, or how many? They're all now set up to cook. Well, I'm looking at the plans, and there's going to be 100 additional kids in one of the buildings, okay, so can we do that?
That's why I'm...
Is that the only school you think that would impact?
Stadler Row is really the one.
The standout, stands, okay, yes.
The rest you can, you can make them do.
Okay, yes, thank you.
So, we'll bring it in.
I thought that, I think, correct if I'm wrong, I thought that the school lunches were actually made at one of the middle schools and then brought to some of the elementary schools, is that correct?
That was a long time ago.
It's not happening right now that the lunches are...
They do make some lunches at the middle schools.
They do, okay, and which schools do they deliver to?
I can answer that. The food is, the food is not, is not prepared and cooked at Rogers Park, it is, it is sent out in bulk, and it is prepared at each site. Rogers Park is our commissary, and it sends out to all of the elementary schools.
That's why I have warmers and so forth.
Dr. Mr. Rockenthal?
I'd like to ask a really dumb question. Does anybody bring peanut butter and jelly sandwiches to school anymore? Is everybody in a...
Yeah.
Okay, is, is there any other question?
Sure. What do you need from us tonight for those? Do you need anything from us?
No, it went to the facilities committee. We're going to meet on Monday, if there ain't, based on our conversation, we'll bring that to the table. It will come back to the next board meeting. Board approves that, then we'll sign the paperwork that needs to go in. If we don't, we have a major problem because it's not in by...
30?
Yeah, then we don't, we're not, it's a cycle.
We're not on the, we're not on the commissioners list or something.
Keeping the end in mind, this doesn't give us anything, but this, all this is queue us up to receive approval. This will be pending the referendum on November 11th, if it's approved. If it's not approved, we've got some real work and issues to do afterwards.
So, this is just for information?
Yes, yes. Right? We get it with that? The next part here, the seeking waiver and the additional funding. You know, I, I knew this in folks in the audience waiting for some approval, I would, I would ask your indulgence, if you want to do action items, and then I will go to the waiver ampment. If you go to the action items, that's what they'll be bringing.
Can I have motion action, I agree.
That the Board of Education approved the Rogers Park Middle School trip to Puerto Rico, January 17th through the 22nd, 2013, in accordance with 12-112.
Moved by Kathy, second by Mrs. Alberts. Are there any questions concerning the trip? We have no one here for Rogers Park or Park trip?
Yes.
Do you want to come up? Hello, how are you?
I'm nothing, we have yet.
This is trip 5, 4?
This, this will be our sixth trip.
Now, if the board members have any questions they would like to ask about the trip. Mr. Kathy, second.
The, well, I'm always concerned with the cost and that some, the cost may be prohibitive to certain students, and I know you have fundraised some work done. Are there any students going on the trip that needed financial aid, and so was the financial thing?
Yes, we have, and we don't have the students going for the coming year yet because we wait until we're approved. So, I can't answer that for the coming year, but in the past, we have had students that had specific needs and we were able to work with them in various ways. One student this year, for example, dad is in the Middle East serving, so we made sure that we were able to find some funding that could enable that student to go on the trip, and if anybody got anything out of it, it was that student, it was a real joy. So, yes, we have the accommodations, and again, we do kind of overall fundraising as well to keep the, because we've been able to keep the trip to under, this year it was $950 per student, and that was airfare, all accommodations, all admissions, all transportation, and all meals. So, it's, it's, it's pretty good, and the trips that this will take in the past to DC, and I'm not sure about the Boston trip this year, because that was a little bit different trip, but the cost between, the difference in cost between the Washington DC trip and the Puerto Rico trip is about $50. So, some of the students, you know, they felt that it was a different trip that they could take, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anna? All in favor of the trip, could I hear your ayes?
Aye.
Oppose? Any abstention? Motion so care. Thank you. Enjoy.
Thank you.
Action item D.
That the Board of Education accept the May 2012 operating results analysis of the general fund and reports with 12-113.
Motion made by Kathy, second by Mrs. Alberts.
Yeah, just, I'll let you know, as you can see, we added about $100,000 this month, last month, in our, in our reserves, so we're at about, give back about $322,000. Couple of things that we're still looking at, we received, as I said in my memo there, we received two checks for E-rate, so we're waiting for our third check. If that third checks comes, we'll probably add an additional $50,000 to our surplus. So, everything is looking good. We ran the balloon checks, we're just checking those out to make sure everything is correct, and we're moving along. I will, the reason why we're doing it at the first meeting is, the second meeting I'll give you a more up to date, just a verbal thing where we stand and what we're doing and so forth. So, knock on wood, we did, another reason why we are in such good shape is because of the mild weather, okay, saving a number of dollars on that, as you can see. Also, the diesel fuel is not as high as they anticipated last year, again, and so those were the two main factors of why we have this surplus going forward. We'll continue to look at that and getting together our next year's budget, make sure everything is prophetic, we're working on that. Couple of things that come in are pretty good, so we're looking at the fuel oil and diesel for next year, so.
Any questions for women? Mr. Kathy?
On the salaries, Ed, you say the end of month production, there are areas of concern that could just, could you just...
Right, we always do that, until I get that last balloon check, where we put in, and the blue check, some of those items have come down, and we're looking really good, so. We always, I always like to be conservative, especially in salaries, we cover, sometimes we cover just a little more because you never know, especially with subs and who's sick and so forth. So, we ran the big payroll and we're looking good, so we'll review that.
All in favor of the motion, could I hear your ayes?
Aye.
Oppose? Any abstention? Motion so care. Action item C.
That the Board of Education accept the May 2012 operating results analysis grants and projects in accordance with 12-114.
Motion made by Kathy, second by Mr. Terry, second, Ed.
Yeah, just an update, what we're trying to do this year is really being conservative for next year because of where we stand, and we're going to show, at the end of the year, we'll show a number of accounts where we have carryover, more than we anticipated because we don't know what the government will give us for federal funds and for state funds. So, a number of those federal accounts, whether it's Title III English Language, whether it's IDA handicap, or whether it's Title I, we're just accumulating a little extra carryover in anticipation about the government's going to give us, because we really don't know, we never know. This year, Title I didn't come in until probably October, you know what I mean, and we're already paying people and borrowing from, from general fund and then paying back the general fund, so hopefully we'll have enough to cover, hopefully Title I will be, I'm dying.
Any questions for Ed? CNN, all in favor of the motion, could I hear your ayes?
Aye.
Oppose? Any abstention, motion so care. Now, we're going to move to the superintendent report.
No, I'll go through those and I'll return to the waiver. What I'm doing, number one, I don't know any of you, those are board members that were there, we had Coda on the 2nd of June, which is the Celebration of the Arts, started that about two years ago, just put out there the wonderful programs that we have, and really to inform the public that it's such an integral part of what we're doing, and that's, we had it at UConn for two years, and this year, when we're able to move it to... And that's, uh, we had it at UConn for two years and this year when we're able to move it to, uh, high school, West County, you know, you know what I'm saying? And, um, and we did it in conjunction with Kids Marathon. The Kids Marathon has been a wonderful program. It's getting a lot of press, uh, in, in Connecticut now. An Olympian, uh, Dixon has, has created this, this program. And, um, the kids, uh, run a portion of it, probably about a month and a half, two months ago. And they run the whole marathon, uh, and they run the last mile at, at the, uh, culminating activity. And that's what they did at the high school. So in the back we have about five hundred students doing the running by school. There were some area schools other than Denver there, but most of the kids there were art kids. And then in the courtyard we had the Celebration of the Arts inside and it was a great celebration. And in the morning we have SATs up there, so it was kind of a busy day in the school. But, um, the art people did it all on their own. They organized it, um, the kids from various clubs and society and bands and of course all pitched in and it's really a community effort. And, um, you know, and, uh, it's just something we wanna continue doing, I have to go, do there right now.
Yes, I'd just like to, uh, comment, uh, in fact, the people, they also told me this, that they really thought it was great that it was at the high school. Those of us who went, I think you were immersed in the total environment of the music, uh, was in the art of the courtyard and then all the art displays and all. And it was just great and it was so compact and all, but it was almost overwhelming and it wasn't overly spread out. And, uh, plus the fact it was on neighborhood school grounds. Okay, I think that's very, very important. So I'm, I'm just throwing it out that they should be commended those put together and hopefully they do it in the same place in the future because I think it worked out very, very well. And I have also in the past, and I'm sure I'll do that from what it was, too, and my thankful for what they gave us for this. Like I said, I, you felt more immersed than.
Thank you, Mr. Captain.
Michael, we're, uh, coordinated, right, Bill and, uh?
Great job.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, in addition to the art.
You need to come up to the mic, please.
In addition to the art and music, folks, with, um, the family consumer science teachers were there. They did childcare kinds of activities and games and face painting and so I just wanted to make sure that.
Thank you.
Patterson Cafe, they did all, they did all of that. So most of the staff was there and a number of students from those classes were also there helping out.
And I think they're intending on having up there, that's the point. Good old, everybody here. I, um, this is gonna come up, the kindergarten, we have a conversation in the waiver information and we have both of us, we went to the commissioners meeting on Monday. But before you, um, just, just as a memo here, I think, um, when we looked at this, Joe and the audience has worked, worked on this for us. This would take, if we went, moved towards this next year, rolling out full day kindergarten, the first set of schools that would, uh, receive, uh, the, the program, which means every school here would have full day kindergarten at each of the schools and there would be no halftime in those schools. Park Avenue, Great Plains, Pembroke, Case Town and Moore Street. You may recall Moore Street, Doc, who's the service kind of on the line about, he came to us and said, I'm gonna make this thing work. Got some parents from this group actually. And at that night we sort of, we didn't know. We, we thought we wanna do, but we didn't think we had space, but he came to Bill and said, look, this is something I wanna do. I'm a little bit concerned because kindergarten growth, um, it, it really is, could be unpredictable. And, and you know as well as I do, being in there longer than I have, um, that many folks may go to kindergarten privately and returning first grade. So this on the horizon may have parents come. So I said to, in fact, we went to principals today, I'm concerned, guys, you know, if we get them in, what do we do? It's like, well, let's see what happens. So, um, obviously our cutoff date, obviously, if everybody comes in, looks at the paperwork and works with us about any adjustments that we have to do. So we have, we know what we have now, but again, we have told parents, this is the news that we've been telling them. We do not have full day kindergarten. At this point we have, we have a regular program until there's a decision made to move it forward. Rather than that, than tell parents we have something for some reason, we can't do it, it would be inappropriate, they do all these plans. So the great news here, if we look at this, um, by doing this, we have about next year eight hundred and sixty of the big students according to the, the monitor, uh, in the predictions. And, um, we currently have, with the money to be added, two hundred and forty new all day kindergarten seats to the five elementary. Giving us about five hundred and seventy good seats that we have public. That's, that's pretty remarkable for five FTEs. Now, some of that is because it's home based, folks are not traveling, we can economize, some folks are half time, they're full time. But the FTE is about five that we're dealing with and, uh, which is reasonable. And if we do this, um, then obviously next year we can add the next cadre in the year after, depending on what happens in November. And that is my word because if November comes along and for some reason we don't expand, you know, it's gonna, you know, I don't want to put this off the tables. So we gotta figure it out. This is a good thing to do for the kids. So that's, that's the dilemma we're in, but by doing this next year, you'll, you'll have almost more than half the students in our full day program. And it's been a goal of all of us to have this. Phil, do you wanna get something to the board or?
And what's?
So the five schools listed here will have full day kindergarten for all of their students enrolled in their schools.
Yeah.
The five schools listed will have full day kindergarten for all of their kindergarten students enrolled.
Correct.
The other six will still have the one full day kindergarten that is based on lottery.
Correct.
Out of the other six coo, um, buildings, are any of those buildings, um, or do any of those buildings have any availability to add a kindergarten, like a second full day class?
Joe has been talking to the principal because this is something we call almost daily.
When we, when we look at the list, the closest school in our, in our phase rollout would be Ellsworth who have, have space. Right now they currently have a large fifth grade population there and that's prohibiting adding the all day K program in Ellsworth. There are, there is space, the rest of the schools go out, go up through the phases and there isn't a lot of open space there to actually add. Without truly taking a, with the art, a lot of the arteries have already been taken, so there's, there's not a lot of space there.
Just, if somehow that can be communicated clearly because I'm getting a lot of, um, calls and people speaking to me on the field that there are other schools with possibly more space that could hold another kindergarten classroom, maybe not the entire, you know, all kindergarten, so maybe offer a second full day kindergarten classroom. So if that's not true, then that just needs to be shared and communicated clearly?
I don't know if it's not true. I think, for example, um, one of the schools that may have, I was shocked that, um, Moore Street has space, for, for frankly, you know, I was like, I just, he does. And, but remember he has two preschool programs that probably have to move, but not next year down the road. I know Ellsworth has priority of art and just felt that this is the best thing with their kids to have a program, not have it next year. Not next year, we're not. Not sure about the other schools. I can't, uh, I know, that's what I'm saying, Joe talked to him. So, you know, I, I don't wanna, all I know is that these are the ones that said that they have the space, I mean, Ellsworth, the rest of them, they couldn't do it. Could they have room for one more? That may be possible, as, as apparently they look at it, but if, if, if our approach has not been one, it's been all. So our question has not been a question of can you add eight full day kindergarten? It was if we were to expand your current program to full day kindergarten for everyone. So that, that wasn't the question that we had asked about, we're not doing one, but it was either all or none kind of thing, right?
Yeah, there was, we always took that deal with the principal.
Yeah.
Basically, for, you know, you were getting out of the half day K business or you're staying hard way.
And part of it too is the transportation issue for, I, I am not going there. We didn't ask that question.
Okay, are you understanding on the full day kindergarten that's done by lottery?
The, the current program?
Yeah. Okay, so these additions are, I'm going to be done by lottery?
No, these, the kids.
Okay.
These kids, they're, they're, they're stat, they're kids that are part Great Plains, Pembroke, Case Town, Moore Street. Those kids that live in those patchy areas, they won't have to participate in lottery. If, if we give them full day kindergarten for all their sections, they just attend, there's no lottery needed.
So it'll all be down first, uh, first of all?
No, uh?
Then you all will draw and over gets those slots?
No, 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 there are no slots. It's like going to first grade, uh, except kindergarten will just have enough room for all the kids that, that, that would sign up registered for kindergarten, they have for their kindergarten.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding, I, I just thinking visual fairness, that it's fair across the board of all the students throughout the district. Uh, is, is it fair, what we're hearing, I, okay. I'm, I'm for the expansion, I'm just wondering is, are, you know, is it fair to all the students throughout this district going to go?
That's true. I'm ju, I'm trying mostly to understand your question and, and was it that, is there a possibility for at least next year us to have another full lottery kindergarten in one of the buildings? Um, and what I'm hearing in police department, I'm wrong, is that it's not necessarily not true or true. It's more a matter of that's not the way we're approaching kindergarten. Is, is that correct? I mean, that we're gonna do it, that we're gonna be able to offer full to neighborhood kids rather than go with the lottery type thing? This is the question, I.
Let me, let me, I'm sorry if I'm gonna throw this wrong. Right now, we have one full day kindergarten at each school. In order to enter that full day kindergarten, you have to get into a potter. When the proposal that I'm putting before you is how we think the one point seven needs to be spent. And in there, looking at a number of space availability for, um, implementing full day kindergarten. In looking at the space, these are the, these, we asked the principals, if we were to institute full day kindergarten for all of your kids, all of your kids, no lottery needed, can you handle it? These are the principals that said yes. The question is, can, if we didn't ask the question, well, if we would only add one, is that possible? That wasn't a question we asked. We said either you, you know, you're in or you're out, kind of thing is what we said. So that's what, so I apologize for any, you know, missing. Bob, the answer to your question is no, on a continued. We have, you know, it's, it's like, can we, we have, uh, you know, almost two hundred and seventy kids, we can help more, we're doing it. By doing it the way we're doing it, instead of, uh, we're, we're gonna bring those kids into, uh, you know, the program and I think that's helpful. There isn't, there is a gap preparation in first grade, absolutely a gap preparation in first grade. It's gonna be less for, less kids is all it's going to be. If we were to implement across the district to, to go to, as one of the plans we had originally was add one at each school. Do you recall that plan? That was what we hoped, that's before we had growth and everything. And then that would get us in two years, that was more of an egalitarian way of doing it, everybody, and it would be by lottery. So we decided not to, one, because of transportation issue, we save sixty or seventy thousand on bus to put our boards in this. And, um, we felt it was a better way to approach the goal and that, that's all. But, you know, if you, if the board, uh, if it wants to open up to a different lottery system, then that's, that's, that's definitely, you'd have to raise the, the lottery for, you would just say, instead of having twenty-two seats at school J, you're gonna have now forty-four seats. You know, and then, and yet if you can't do it, the other schools, it's still, it's still being discrepancy, but you'll be serving twenty-two more kids. That, that's, that's the point, that's being.
Doctor Sam, also here, that's part of, and Rose question is, and she's on the side of the field, I'm not. So my question would be, how do we use related affirmation that she's bringing to us to let them know that we don't have all these other schools out here with, um, room for all day kindergarten? And I think that's very important because if we go there and we're looking at these schools that want to provide all day kindergarten and people out there with the impression that there's other schools, then we're gonna have the commuters all in the upper room. So I guess my question to you and my fellow board members about our orders, you know, letting know, but how would we get this affirmation out before it turns into something unquestioned?
Well, here's a, here's a, I can't start sending things out to people, telling them about full day kindergarten, in fact, I'm not. So right now, the communications that we have are happening, so that's what I'm faced with, it's very difficult. Uh, I think the best way to approach them, just, I'm thinking out loud, is, is to go through the principals and make sure they have facts. And the communications they send home to their parents, be very clear that they are on the list to receive it. And maybe we could have a disclaimer on what, and it'd go out that way. I, I, you know, certainly I could do a blast to in the paper, but you know, I don't know how many people will read it. But if something came out from the principals themselves that they sent home with the kids, that's probably would be read and I could embed something in there, it could be one way. Put something on our website, obviously. But I gotta be careful on, I don't want people thinking that full day kindergarten, and we don't, that's my only dilemma. But I think I can, we can try and get some information out publicly as well as with the handout.
It could be at our plant.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it could be at our plant.
And it's based on space, it's not based on anybody going, that's a better school, that's not. Based on right now, space, I think that would calm people down or something.
Well, we could do that, we could put something together.
There's more on the field.
I do think it needs to be communicated clearly because there are some people who feel that there are space at other schools, um, to at least add another classroom for full day kindergarten. Um, so building J has right now one full day kindergarten, but space for a second class, not for the entire building to have full day kindergarten, but possibly space for a second class. There are people who feel that, there are buildings that exist that have that. And their question is, why have not, why haven't we looked at that and added that second classroom? So that we could accommodate forty children and not just twenty. So it's in the newspaper, the, the parents are reading it, it was just recently in the newspaper that this was the plan, that these five schools would get full day kindergarten. So I know it needs to be, it needs to be communicated, but they already know that even though it hasn't happened yet officially, it's out there that this is what the plan is, but the questions now are, there are schools that have room for a possible second class that would have a lottery and why haven't we not addressed that? And I'm just, I'm just sharing this information.
I didn't, I, I, we could, I guess the question now becomes this one of you all as a board of education. We're saying, do you think the best way to use one point seven is implement this way? Do you think you wanna turn around and say, hey, some others, you know, then we have to retrench and do that? We think that's the best way to spend the money is to do it this way. Uh, I never asked the principals that question, I was not asking them. So if I put something out there, I need to be explicit and say that although there may be spaces, the way we'll be implementing so that they acknowledge is what you're saying and it is a preference of saying, we want full day kindergarten and we made a decision to do it this way, not that way. We hear what's that, will always be there, but some of it's true. There is probably some space for a pot, if you want, that it could happen or a room that they could do another thing.
Yeah, I mean, I'll post that to the principals at times, like if I get out, there's a language arts room that's gonna get taken for kindergarten. Dave's like, you're gonna take their room, I'll give up for kindergarten. So it kind of also depends what, what, what winds up freed up by the principals. I mean, that, that becomes a, um, Moore Street's got a music program down at the end, that, that's, the class is gonna be utilized for all day kindergarten. I mean, it just all depends what, you know.
Joe, uh, there is another approach and, um, as we get into the waiver, the conversation, and I, and I'm weighing this in my head, we're moving on to the next year. We don't have to do anything next year, we can save the money and then we can say, put it all at the same time. I mean, we have that option, we do that. I'm a little worried about timing. So the state's saying, here's money, how are we gonna close the achievement, that's its purpose. So no matter what we do, we have to be explicit about how the gap is gonna close. And one of our initiatives is, is to start implementing this full day kindergarten along with preschool stuff that's going on and all the other wraparound stuff, all of that together. So, um, right now at this point, it seems to make the most sense. And I need to be coming back and saying, you know, oh my gosh, we really can't do this, we may have to move away here. That's the conversation we have to have. So we might not be rolling it out, we might be rolling out three quarters of them next, uh, a year from now. But this is our approach to looking at, rolling it out for the reasons that we do. But I think if we do it, I'll get something out of the parents from us officially, as long as it's out there.
Karen?
I, I just wanna say that we did already discuss.
Okay. Uh, I, I just want to say that we did already discuss how we were going to roll out kindergarten with the 1.7 million that we're going to get. So while you're in the soccer field, that's what you should be telling them is this, yes, this is our approach to rolling out kindergarten, period. Is it the right way? We hope so. Uh, could it have been, uh, could you have gotten to, um, the end result in a different way? Of course, you could probably get 12 ways to Sunday, but this is the way that we all came to a decision to do it this way. So if you can convey that to parents when you speak to them, that's what you have to do.
And that's not a problem except I don't think that's just my sole responsibility. And this is a question, and this is a legitimate question that parents have as to what was our thinking. And so I don't see why that is something that we can't address as a board or officially through Dr. Sal.
That's fine.
So are we, are we looking at something else? Is it safe to assume that even with a 1.7 million, we've got enough money to do all day kindergarten in these five schools? Plus add another class at this, that or the other school? If, if there was space to build it? Rephrase that, okay?
Yeah.
What Ann Rose is saying is, you know, his parents saying at whatever school happens to be, there is space available. So they don't understand why we're not putting a kindergarten in that space that is available. So my question is, is there money to do that if the factor is space? Or in order to get that money, do we have to back off on all day, everybody? Assuming these state funds aren't.
No, no. Well, again, it's how you want to deal with that. The answer to that is, do these five, these five can, you know, we don't have to, we don't have to put a full day kindergarten um, at each of them. For example, if they all take three sections, we can say, you're going to get two. We're going to say two or three for these other, you know, out there that's funded. Or we can just, we spend 1.7 differently too. You know, spend this way with this one, and then add, you know, another teacher somewhere to add another. It just comes off of 1.7. But we would have to take something off of 1.7 absolutely in order to get, you know, in order to make, make it work.
Okay. Clarification. When we did this, we were primarily looking at space availability? And I'm quite sure it was a, kind of dependent on which principal said yes or no. I'm quite sure that it matters what the principal thinks, but it also matters where we, we determine it's most appropriate to have this offered. But space makes some sense as what you were looking at.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Now, next year, we will again be looking at space where we can put the, the other ones?
We have a peek at next year, and it looks as though grade schools would be in a position?
There's three that, that possibly in a position to, to move in next year, in that space.
The real question will come down that next year, because those other schools are really pushing the seams, I, I, you know, and that's, I worry about that. That's why I'm saying, it'll depend on what happens in November. Because it's going to need, it's going to need two things. It's probably going to need those 16 classrooms. And the intent of the board, all of us, was to make sure when we opened up these classrooms, we have art dedicated space, the music dedicated. I don't think that's going to, I think partly be a dedicated space, the music may be on this, going to make this happen. And I also think we may have to do some jury grading and some numbers in order to make it happen across the district, you know? Get a sister school pocket or something to make it. But to get there, to get full day kindergarten, you know, you're going to do that. Or you have to add a number of more classes. And the way we, we had a class, as you may have quoted, we're three buildings, not adding two or three at each site. Remember that? That would have put us in a whole different perspective. So we got to make all those adjustments. But it is based on spatial. But I can get it clear out there. I'll get something out there when the board decides which way you want us to go.
That's an objective.
Uh, facility review, summer usage. Uh, there's been some things out there about the fields at the high school, and I just want to update you on that. Um, real quick, we, uh, the windows at the high school are going to be, thank you, Joe. The windows at the high school are going to be replaced. We were told, um, that everything would work, that they would have to create a perimeter. That perimeter was like 72 feet or 75 feet from the building. Uh, actually, what happened was like about two weeks ago, they went to a meeting and said, you know what? We don't think it's safe. We think you need to close the whole facilities. It sounds good until, you know, you had a number of people who have asked for and have requested space to do things and were given permission. Now we've got a challenge. If you can't have the space. And I didn't think the timing was right that we should look at. So Ed and Joe and the city brought everybody in to make a conversation. And where we have.
Yeah, we, uh, had a drawing and, uh, two open areas where, uh, people can, you know, go into the, go into the facility. One is at, uh, access from the concession stand on the entrance, concession stand is one. The other one is access by the baseball field. Everything else will be fenced in around the building. So there will be access and, uh, that was, uh, given to the meeting area last Tuesday afternoon at the site.
Are we going to provide any watchmen around?
We have another meeting tomorrow. We have not decided.
I'm really concerned that kids, you know, because parents will drop off kids, and kids see kids, and they'll walk through the facilities. And we're about the board's responsible. And so, you know, if they don't want to pay for it, I think we need to figure out for the freedom to do something. Because I'm worried about that.
We have a meeting every Thursday, 1:00, 8 o'clock.
Okay, so we can talk about that. Um, Bill, will you bear into this?
Sure. Can I just go back briefly on the kindergarten staff? Do you want to do staffing?
No.
No.
We'll do it later.
Okay. Um, we have a team, uh, led by Pat, Joe, Akeem, and Christie Zalad, our Teacher of the Year. We'll be introduced to shortly. And Harry Ross, Valley, Mayor, Sal, and myself. And we met with the I Care Foundation, and we're trying to, what, to continue our STEM initiative. It was very favorably received. You never know any of these kinds of things. But when one of the key people on Behringer's side said, your goals are aligned with our goals, we agreed, signed, and we smiled. So this is definitely, we set ourselves in front of them. Um, there are some other initiatives that are planned to try and build a relationship with the I. And if things work out well, we might be in line for a $200,000 award from them.
All right, Bill, now staff.
Um, I just didn't want to let it pass because it has, you know, significant budget implications. A quick word on the kindergarten program, because I look very closely at the, uh, the principals on this. Number one, Moore Street, we were able to do that, which we didn't think we could, because we dismantled the computer lab. And this may be a model that we'll go to in the future. We dismantled the lab, full size classroom, and moved to a wireless environment with carts. And that may allow us to pick up a classroom at every single school, at the elementary, elementary school. Second National Front with Sal said, our $1.7 million contingent upon closing achievement gap, if we put all the kindergarten across the board, by the time we get to the high school, we're identified because of the high school case, it's going to be nine years down the road. And they won't allow us to do that without providing metrics all the way up the line. So it's going to be a blended strategy. Um, as Joe mentioned, we repurchased a room over at Hayestown, a couple rooms, because we moved out the pre-k kids to go to the Low Ridge Education Center. And that's what gave us this, this space over there. And lastly, the original plan was the phases in all along. Remember years ago when the mayor first talked about full day kindergarten as a four-year plan? And funding not falling out would have been in place in September, that being personal full day K. So the phase-in model, although it's, I know I said for Sal's, we would love to do it all schools, you know, right off the bat. But the community, when we first kind of floated that idea, there was one favorable response. I'm sorry, one last thing. We talked with the principals about whether we only added one more, Ann Rose just said, one more kindergarten to your building right now. This may sound a little strange, but it seems to be more acceptable to have one full day K or all full day K, and to have mostly full day K and one half a lot classroom with kids outside. So the principals, for the most part, they'd rather have either all full day K or the current model until it's our time to get, or maybe a year from now, or two years from now. I can talk to our parents and, and help them to see that it's a two-year cycle. If you're a kindergarten parent coming up in September, it matters to you. If you're a kindergarten parent coming up two years from now, that's when that matters to you. If you're a kindergarten parent coming up in three years, that's what it matters to. As we listen to the parents, they've said, quite frankly, I really don't care about this September because I have, um, a channel that's three years old. It's not until my channel gets online that I really care. The best model, of course, is to go full day kindergarten out of the back. Um, staffing, uh, we have, I think it's kind of a mixed bag. I think we have some good news. We pulled off the staffing, uh, requests out of 1.7 because we can feel from the information we got from Brentford that we could pull it off. Um, we have three elementary schools, Shelter Rock, believe it or not, that's what I mean, King Street Primary and Ellsworth, where their numbers are so small at a given grade level, and they don't have it in a different grade level. We may be able to extract a teacher from that school and move it to another school where they're, they're, they do need a teacher. Let me be specific. Uh, one of the elementary schools we have, we pulled back. The board remembers that at grade two through five, our staffing is one teacher for 25 kids. So if we have 73 kids in, in a, at a grade level in one school as we do, if you have three teachers, you have 25, 25, 23, or four, something like that. They have four teachers, so the numbers are down 17, 18, while Park Avenue School has 29, 30, and 30, which we've never done that. So we could extract a teacher from a school A, either Shelter Rock, King Street, or Ellsworth. We could have teacher, for example, to South Street, which has a large grade five for the kids. Park Avenue, a grade two, that's where they have a large number, and Stanley Wells, a grade two. So it looks like we're going to be able to do kind of a swap, which means we may not, you know, we don't want to ask you to hold us to this. We may not have to hire any more elementary teachers than we currently have, just kind of play music and ship. Understood that nobody likes to be in this classroom under school, the relationship with parents and the school community. Um, but people, we met with the principals of Sal's, if they, if Sal would explain that to them. Um, our plan is to hire two teachers at Rogers Park for STEM. Uh, our original vision always was that 300 students in the STEM program. And then funding and achieving that this September, we'll have 300 students. So we'll have four teachers, four teachers, and four teachers. At the high school level, uh, there's a need based on our, uh, we have pretty good projections now. There's teacher needed for science, uh, bio and chem certification to address the labs. Um, we also have, um, three English learning teachers that we need, one at the elementary, one at the middle, and the high school. And those we can put into the 1.7 because you already have a closing achievement gap, and we have a small ratio. English learning learner, DLL teacher, just groups. And lastly, we're creating .4 in English over at ACE. And the recent found out is that, um, Dave Kanagan left. He was an English teacher. He was teaching a couple of sections. So this will allow us to backfill that. As we move toward the graduation requirements over time, this will help. Lastly, I'm sorry, uh, we have, one of the, uh, hired two teachers at the high school, uh, one in the math lab that will have a closing achievement gap. That will follow 1.7, one of the signs that will also help closing achievement gap. So when we do all this, it looks like we may not have any additions at the elementary level, fingers crossed. Or we want to, um, we will have two at Rogers Park, um, one at the high school, and .4 at ACE out of the general fund. The rest of it, we're going to try to put in 1.7.
And a lot is to us in Kentucky, which is, I mean, we do understand that right now, um, finalizing the high school schedule and graduation requirements and seniors are really high priority. We're keeping an eye on that. I don't know what's happening with kindergarten. It's shifting, be there. So at the next board meeting, um, you've asked the, you know, principals before they leave, get us their, their best numbers. And then maybe I'll have some update for you at the next meeting. But what I'd like from you is this, the ability to, you know, add staff if I need it, because I don't want to start a school and, and then come here a week later, you give me permission to open a classroom, and then we've got to tear our room apart. That's just not good for the kids. So we haven't had to do that. We've been able to move things around. But just in case we do, we've asked the principals on it. I'll just say, if you need to come back, give us the numbers. If something's there, we need to hire someone. I don't know who else to try to do it before school starts. So we don't, at least think back on the kids and the parents and all that. But I'll give you some better numbers at the next meeting. So we asked the principals to give us this. Okay. Um, thank you, Bill, very much for doing that.
Sure.
Information, strategic school profiles, AR, suppression chains, no good thing except going for two times a year. And there's a summer school schedule near, near information. Um, I'd like to move to the Connecticut waiver. This is a big presentation for all of us. We're still learning here, so please understand, as we gather information, we're trying to understand deeply what this all means. We spent some time with the commissioner Monday along with all the other lines districts, and with a number of state folks and other regional administrators as well. So, Bill, we have the information. We can present it here. We'll come around. Sure.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just in the strategic report, why are we still using 2,000 census? I'm not, I'm not putting it on you. I'm just wondering. It's 12, I'm, yeah, I'm 13 years behind.
Takes them that long to collect the data? We use the.
Holy data, right? I mean, the days of the.
We collected now because of the new information system, but we put it all together across it. By the time we get it, it'll be.